All right, I'll call our meeting to order here. I'll have our city clerk read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Enslay's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act during the COVID-19 outbreak, the Toppin City Council chambers will not be open for the public to attend the meeting in person. To remotely attend this meeting, register by selecting "Join a Meeting." Call-in information for listen-only mode is (253) 215-8782, meeting ID (891) 1449-2945, passcode (120254). Email City Clerk or call (509) 865-6754 with questions. Now I will conduct the roll call. Mayor Oaks.
Here.
Mayor Protem Savedra.
Here.
Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show we have full attendance and a quorum.
Thank you. We have an update from City Manager Hoyt on the CARES Act money.
Thank you, Mayor. I got an update from Jonathan Smith at YCDAs this morning about our small business COVID money program that we have going. We got 102 applications. Thirteen of our applications were, came from outside the state limit, so they'll be ineligible. There were five applications that could not be verified that they had a valid business license. YCDA went through the Department of Revenue's online business program and could not find them. So that left us 84 eligible businesses. Of those eligible businesses, with $10,000 being the ceiling on how much COVID money we were going to grant per business, 20 businesses were, have kind of, are on the top of the list, with 18 receiving $10,000 each, two receiving $7,000 each, because that was their request, and one receiving $5,000, and that was their request. The scoring range, there was 30 possible points on the application. The scoring range was between 25 and 17. None of these 20 businesses received any other financial assistance from any other CARES Act or COVID-related program. So we're excited about that. They're going to be sending out the letters to the people that were ineligible, the people that didn't get funded, and also a letter and an agreement to sign to go forward with the process. If everybody that got granted the money signs the agreement, that's the list. If not, it'll move down to the next list. Keep in mind that we're going to be, we've received a second round of COVID money, CARES Act money, $136,000. We believe that the city will need approximately $50,000, $60,000 of that for our own use for COVID-related things like overtime, 14 days off, PPE and things. So we should have around $80,000 to also distribute out. And so what we're planning to do at this point is, with council's permission, we'll get some more data around and have it ready for the next council meeting. Just go forward and use the existing qualified list and distribute the rest of the money as it goes down the list. So council will have a couple, three options. One is to go at the $10,000 rate, and we'll have approximately eight more businesses to pick up, or maybe drop down to 5,000, and we'll pick up about more, about 16 to 18 more businesses. We do, this is unfounded, but I'm assuming that we may get some more COVID money. I don't know for sure. I've heard the rumors that that could happen. Senator Murray's office just kicked out another opportunity. Then we won't find out how to use that money, or if we're even eligible. Until next Wednesday, we'll have a phone conversation with her office to find out. So the hope would be distribute our $10,000 per our 190 at $10,000 per, for the first 20 businesses. We'll make a decision next week or so if we want to go 5,000 or 10,000 for the next round of that 80,000 that we have left. And in that resolution that will come forward will be the opportunity to backfill up to 10,000 if we're able to get more, or not. So that's kind of the update I just got this afternoon, so I wanted to share that with council. You have any questions, please give me a call or come see me.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Hoyt. Move on to item two, which was Budget Revenue Workshop.
Yay! Well, I just would like to give kudos to Debbie and her staff. They work long and hard hours getting this around, as they always do. This is a very important time. This sets the tone for all of next year. Her memorandum that she got ready and handed out and actually delivered last weekend, or this weekend to everybody, is a very comprehensive list of the funds, where they go, what they get to be used for, and how much they are. And so this is a very important reference tool. Put it in your, it'll be in our budget, of course, but please put it in your council information packet to look back on at any time. There's going to be a lot of information Debbie's going to share. Absorb all you can, and what you can't, please call us for further explanation. Very informative. Thank you, Debbie.
Well, thank you, City Manager Hoyt. That was very kind of you. So we do have quite a bit of information to go over tonight. And I would like to preface with, we do have some seasoned council members who have been through many budgets and seen many things at their time at the podium. And we have some new council members, and so this is aimed to help the new council members to understand where the city receives its revenue sources from and how we can use those revenue sources. So I just am going to begin just an overview of the memo that was attached with the documents. And to start out with, the total revenue that staff is projecting at this point is $30,171,377. And with our fund balance, we are projecting $46,366,273. And I'm not going to go too much into the beginning fund balance. If afterwards someone would like to go further into that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or go in depth on any item. We do, one of the first items we have is taxes, and taxes makes up a number of a number of items that we receive. And there is a table on the bottom of page two that shows what are all the taxes that we receive. And those are property tax, sales tax, emergency medical services tax, business and occupation tax, utility tax, lodging tax, and a franchise fee. And along with that table is it shows what fund receives that tax. And our total taxes that we're projecting this year is $5,135,280. I would like to say before I go into the summary of the tax revenues, for our city and as well as all other cities, this is a really difficult year to budget from. Our taxes are kind of all out of whack. We've received more sales tax than we have before. We've received less fuel tax. We have a, you know, a halt on turning off water or collecting late fees. So in August, at the end of August, we had over $120,000 worth of utility payments that had not been made. That does result in over $30,000 of revenue to the general fund. So there's just a lot of stuff going on. So some of the areas that we projected revenues were going to use $2019 instead of 2020, because to use 2020 would just throw us off even further for 2021. So with property tax, we will have our public hearing for the levy setting on November 23rd. And that will be to present to council the proposed levy for the property tax for 2021 that would have a 1% increase to the property tax. On page three, I do show just a little snapshot of how we calculate property tax. And if we were to use the three-year average and what a 1% would look like. And based on the fact that our property tax revenue is $800,000 annually, 1% of that is an increase of $8,000, and that's $8,000 for the whole population that we would be collecting. So we'll go further into that on November 23rd. I did also provide a table that shows the assessed valuation of all the cities that are in Yakima County, their tax levies and their property taxes that they collect, and also a per capita cost. So based on the property tax that we are projecting, or that we collected in 2020, we do spend basically $96.74 per person in Toppinish of that property tax money. The next item is our emergency medical services tax. And that is a tax that was voted by Yakima County residents, and that is exclusively for emergency medical services. And we are receiving $114,000 for that. And even though we code that into the general fund, we can only spend that on the fire and rescue budget in the fire department budget. Sales tax, we are projecting a sales tax of $765,000. And again, that is using the 2019 actual. And I did provide council a breakdown of where our 8% sales tax goes to. We are 8% now. We went to 8% in April because we added the 1% mental health tax effective April 1st. So just for council's information, for every $10 that's spent in Toppinish, that means we get 6 cents. So it's not a lot. I also provided a table that I got from Office of Financial Management that shows for 2019, I'm sorry, so from Department of Revenue, what were all the taxable sales for all the cities in the county and the sales tax that was received? You know, and a note that I did put in here was that we really started receiving a decrease in our sales tax about 10 years ago. And for every year that that, our taxes go down, it means our utility tax goes up. So we are really at the point now where we are financially dependent on the utility tax that we receive from our own utilities. The next item is the criminal justice tax. There are two separate taxes. I didn't realize that. I learned that through this exercise. There's 1% that was voted back in 1993, and then our 1/10th in 1993, and then our 3/10th that we have continued for two more years. That money is all for criminal justice, and it is coded into the criminal justice fund, and it can only be spent on police activities. Business and occupation tax and utility tax, I do want to make just a note that they are two different things. So business and occupation tax is the tax that we charge for the use that we charge for outside utilities, whether they're private or public, to do business in the city. So that's the cable, or not the cable, the gas, the phone, and electricity. And then utility tax is what we are allowed to tax on our own utility. We are allowed to tax any amount that we need to support the general fund or any other fund that we want with that money. However, the business and occupation tax does have a cap of 6%, and that's statewide, unless by referendum it is increased, which our city did do in 1995. They did pass a referendum for an additional 2.5% on the outside utilities. And that 2.5% is exclusively for police services. So that 2.5% is also accounted for in the criminal justice account. And as far as franchise fee and cable tax, since we have Mid Valley TV, we have a joint agreement with Charter and Wapato and Granger. So we are providing the Mid Valley Television, so we're using that money. If we didn't have Mid Valley TV, we would still get the utility tax from Charter, but we would not get a franchise fee. So the franchise fee, which is 5%, and the BNO tax we use to fund Mid Valley Television. Excuse me. And those amounts, I do have them broken down. So for the BNO tax from the outside utilities is $572,000, and the BNO tax that we receive for criminal justice is $215,000. And then for Mid Valley TV, it's $34,000. For our utility tax, which council did reduce from 33% to 31% in 2016, it does account for 42% of all the revenue in the general fund. And it's 40% of all the revenue that we receive throughout all the total funds. Lodging tax is another tax that the state has enabled cities to collect, and that is, it's a tax that's on hotels and motels, and there is a restriction on that money. And because the city's over 5,000 population, we are required to have a special committee that meets and accepts applications from agencies within the city to receive that money to use for tourism. Since we were unable to meet this year, we are not, we haven't projected anything for tourism as far as revenues or expenditures go. So once we're able to start meeting again, we can meet and do that in the spring, and LTAC can accept those applications, and we can come back to council with the recommendations. And we can always do a budget amendment for that in next spring when we can start meeting again. We do have real estate excise tax, and it's whenever someone sells their homes, there's a quarter percent tax that goes to the city. And that money can only be used for capital projects that are in a capital improvement plan and the capital facilities plan. We do have the capital facilities plan part completed. We did that in the end of 2019. The next step is for us is to complete a six-year capital improvement plan. And once we have that finished and have identified that, the projects and council has approved that, then we can start expending those funds for capital projects. And they can be buildings or any kind of infrastructure. It can't be for a car. It can't be for, I don't know, a fire truck. It has to be for infrastructure to the city. And right now, we have $1820,000 in that account. And we are just continuing to save that money until we get that one part done. The next category is licenses and permits. Although we do issue a number of licenses, permits, they're not a big moneymaker. A lot of them are regulatory, which are items that come from the municipal code that council has enacted, such as business licenses, pet licenses, rental licenses. However, for permits, through Washington State, we are required to issue building permits and to make sure that all of our buildings and structures meet our life safety codes. And we're projecting less than $100,000 in revenue of those, although they do consume a lot of staff time in making sure that we are meeting the far life safety codes for the city. The next category is intergovernmental revenues. This has changed a little bit through the state auditor's office. It now consists of any state or federal grants, state shared revenues, and in lieu taxes, which would be any other local government, county facility, state agency that had a business or owned property in the city is exempt from paying property taxes, so we would not receive property tax from them. So for grants and loans, we are anticipating for 2021 over $1 million in grants. The majority of that is due to the street fund, which we have three capital projects that we are going to be completing. And I don't think we have any other grant projects on the horizon after we've completed the three projects. And we'll go over these more when we talk about expenditures. The police and the fire department, they also do some grants. And I think the police department might be looking at doing, applying for some additional grants in some other areas. And then on to state shared revenues, which there's quite a large number of state shared revenues that we do receive. And one of the areas that I would like to just touch on is the importance of the U Council and the city's administration is paying attention to what happens in legislative sessions. The money, all the state shared money is very, very volatile. It can be awarded and taken back and awarded again in the same year. So it is really important for us to pay attention to what's going on there. And when we see that there's going to be cuts, as we have in the past, to make sure that our representatives know how important those state shared revenues are for us. It is, the state runs on a different fiscal calendar than we do. So when they, their year is June to June, ours is January to December. And so just because they're going to award us $100,000, what they say in one year could mean we're only going to get 50% of that because our year's in the middle of theirs' year. So it's just always kind of tricky to calculate that. And we can never predict what legislature's going to do. When they go into session, they could do something completely different than what they planned on the year before. One of the things I did learn in this was with the city assistance that we have received, the original intent of that was to backfill the motor vehicle excise tax that was reduced in, I do have that date in there somewhere, although I can't locate it right now. But we maybe should have a consideration of maybe moving that money out of the general fund and putting it into the street fund for support of the street fund. So right now, there's a cap of $128,000 that a city can receive, but we are projecting $93,000, because I am not sure what the legislature's going to do next year, especially with all of COVID and how much money the state has spent on assistance with folks. So there's going to have to be cut someplace, and I'm assuming it's going to be some of our state shared revenue. Criminal justice revenues, those are also state shared revenues. And we get three shares of that, and one of them is just based on our population. And so it's .33, .33, 33 cents per capita. And then we have special programs, and that's $1.17 per capita. And then our third one is high crime distributions, and we are in a high crime area. Our city's considered high crime. And so, and that's due, they calculate it based on the average crime rate of being over 125% of the statewide average. That amount is just awarded to us, that we don't get anything that says next year you're going to get X amount of dollars. So basically, we're just projecting the same consistent amount that we have received over the past few years. And again, all that money is exclusively for law enforcement, and that money all is put into the criminal justice fund. The fire insurance premium tax is, I mean, it's a small amount. It's $7,000, but it is a big amount for us, and we did almost lose it. The legislators didn't want to take back the fire insurance premium. And what that is, is for the pre-left firefighters. So before DRS was an entity, cities paid a fire pension fund to firefighters. And we do still have one firefighter who receives a pension, and we have three widows who receive pensions. They don't, it's not a lot. So when you pay your homeless insurance and part of your fire insurance is, we get part of that money. We do subsidize quite a bit of that from the general fund to pay those costs. And that is for the retired firefighter. It is for their pension and for all of their medical. Liquor revenues, we get two types of liquor revenues. Liquor revenues and liquor taxes we've received are, we've seen a huge change of that, where we had private liquor stores, and then, or we had state liquor stores, and then they went to private liquor stores. And that money has been all over the board for the past five years. We do, for our liquor excise tax, we are required to put, over 20% of that has to be exclusively for criminal justice. So part of our liquor excise tax goes into the general fund, and part of it goes into the criminal justice tax. And in the budget document that you were given, it does show the percentage. It shows criminal justice or excise tax, 77%, excise tax, 23%. And then we have our infamous motor vehicle excise tax, which is never enough to pay the bill. We, to operate the city's street system, which is to just provide the basics of electricity for streetlights and traffic signals, providing stop signs, stop bars, crosswalks, all the required markings, it's a substantial amount of money. And the motor vehicle fuel tax that we receive does not come close to covering the cost for that operation. We have, over the past three or four years, we have been trying to level out the expenditures where we've had, for so long, we've had some of our folks that are in the water sewer and garbage fund doing work in this, for the streets. And so we're trying to correct the salary so that we know how much it actually costs to operate the city's street system. And then there is a chart that I provided on page 13, and it's just to show you the movement of that state shared revenue. The table on the left shows what is the projected amount for state shared revenue. And then the table on the right shows you what we actually received in 2019. Since we haven't finished the year, we don't have those exact estimates for 2020. But it is interesting to watch the different amounts go up and down from year to year. The next category is charges for goods and services. And, you know, this is just a variety of goods and services that we provide. You know, we don't like make anything to sell. We just provide customer service. We were providing a service to people, whether it is inspecting their home, you know, providing water, collecting sewer, collecting their garbage, or burying people. And that's, you know, the primary focus of what we do is to provide some type of service to our folks. So this chart right here shows the different areas of service that we do provide, and how much revenue we are projecting for each one of those items. Of the $6.9 million of goods and services that we're projecting, 6.7 of that is for the distribution of water, collection of sewer, treatment of sewer, and the collection of garbage. Also on page 14, in the middle of the page, it says item number two, administrative service fees. And I hope I can explain this well. It's a little complicated. So we, by RCW, the general fund is allowed to be reimbursed from enterprise funds or other funds for services that it provides to them. So for instance, we provide financial services. We prepare their budget, the annual report, paychecks. We prepare their budget, the annual report, paychecks. Council members meets on certain items that have to do with water, sewer, garbage, the cemetery, criminal justice. We pay all their bills. So last, end of 2019, we hired FCS group and we did a cost allocation plan. And that more appropriately calculated how much by a specific, specific pieces of information as far as how many paychecks did we distribute? How many accounts payable items did we do? How many items did council present or make a decision on for all these items? And so that total dollar amount that we would normally, we would code that into the, the general fund revenue. And on page two of the revenues, you'll see that there is a history of the administrative services revenue that we have collected. But the state auditor's office has changed their prescription and how we do this. So we can no longer, no cities can do this. You can no longer count that money as revenue. You have to code it as a netted transaction. So that means when you're looking at the, the expenditure line items, expenditure budgets. So even for example, on page six of this document, the budget document that you received, under legislative, it shows a total dollar amount for the legislative budget, but then it shows a negative number, a negative twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty. So that is the dollar amount that the paying funds have reimbursed the legislative budget for the services that the legislative group provided to the fund.
That follows through the whole document in every, in every line, in every category.
Yes. And so I, I'm sorry to have you guys flip around, but on, also on page.
So that, yeah.
This takes care of that funny math that I used to tell you guys.
Yes. It is, it is, it is, it's duplicate revenue. And so, you know, we, we received revenue over here, but then we expensed it out and moved it, this revenue over here. So there's two groups of revenue. And so the auditor's office said, okay, that's just not even working anymore. So on page five, which is a summary of all the general fund departments, there are, there are eight, there are eight departments. And their total amount that's requested has a dark, dark outline around them. And then lower down, it shows a negative four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that also has a dark box around it. Those are the departments that are receiving, those are the departments that are providing the service to those other funds. And all those funds combined, the total that they're reimbursing the general fund for is four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And at the bottom, at the bottom of each one of these departments, it shows the specific dollar amount that is being netted back to that department. So that, that's one of the biggest changes that we have in, in the budget is, is this administrative transfer. So, and again, it's, it's consistent with what we have been charging over the years. The next item is fines and forfeitures. And although we have contracted out our court to the city of Sudyside, we still do receive the fines and forfeitures or fines and penalties that have been assessed to people that have gone through the court system. We do, we, we do pay for that and we are budgeting two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for court services for next year. And the fines and forfeitures that we're projecting to receive are ninety-two thousand. So it, those, those, and they never have that, which is part of the reason why we don't have a court is the amount of fines and forfeitures and penalties that we've received have never, ever been able to cover the cost of those, of having, you know, our own court. So not only was there the staff cost, but there was, you know, a myriad of other costs in providing that service. So the next category is miscellaneous revenues. And although it, it sounds, I hate saying that the legends, two percent money that we receive is just miscellaneous revenue because it's not, it is important revenue that we receive, but that is only the classification that the auditor's office has placed it under. So we have, we did receive awards for the two percent, which the city manager, I'm, I'm sure is going to be going over with council at the next meeting. But they did, a few years back, commit to helping pay for a ladder truck. And we have been collecting that two percent money. And that does get paid, it does get accounted for in a specific fund, in the 119 fund. And that is, it's, it really is unrestricted money, but it's, it's money that the council has committed to doing to a specific thing. But it's, it's strictly, it's not classified as, as a restricted revenue. And then we do have non-revenues and we only have two categories of non-revenues. And non-revenues consist of items that, they, they are revenues, but they're not revenues that we actually are used for operating expenses. And one of those is for our perpetual care for Elmwood Cemetery. So when folks purchase a cemetery plot, they, part of the cost goes to the maintenance and operations and, and servicing of the deceased in the cemetery. But there is a portion of that cost that goes into, it's like, it's basically a cemetery endowment fund where we are saving money for the day that the cemetery closes. And then there's money for the upkeep of the cemetery. So we want to continue, it is a beautiful cemetery. If any of you have not ever been there, you should take a trip out there. It is, is a lovely cemetery. So that, those funds are to protect the cemetery and continue the beautification of that into the future. And then we, a number of years ago, we received a community development block grant. And we loaned that money out to low income residents for home improvements. And we do receive housing payments back from the revenues or from those loans. And those revenues, they can be spent on any, any function within the city as long as it meets the entire needs of the community. So one of the things that we did a couple of years ago was we provided handicap parking space at the fire department. That, that handicap parking space provided service for the entire community. The entire community can use that handicap parking space. But if we were to, you know, provide staff parking and dedicated staff parking, that would not be to the benefit to the entire community. So we would not be able to use those funds for that. And we do need to work with the department of commerce on these funds and receive permission from them to utilize these funds when we do use, use them. And the next and the last item is other financing. And for us, other financing is transfers from one fund to another and any loans that the city receives throughout the year. So there is a table on the last page that does show the list of departments or funds that receive a subsidy from the general fund. And the left-hand side shows the receiving fund. And then on the far right, it shows the dollar amount that, that receiving fund receives. We did start probably three years ago putting more money into the city's capital reserve fund. And that fund is a fund that council authorizes the expenditure of. So if we were to, we do have a couple of items in that fund this year for, for council's consideration. But considering that a lot of our buildings, facilities are over a hundred years old and need repair and upgrades and, and, and whatnot, we don't have opportunities to get grants for some of those buildings. So we do need to make the effort to invest in the city's infrastructure and, and keep it as up to date and well-functioning. We do have, just last year, we used, we didn't use this money, but we used the special projects money to, to do some of the carpeting and painting in city hall, which has been, has been really nice. It's, it's made a big difference in here. So we have our, we have loans that are coming on for the sewer project. And then we also have a proposed project for some water meters that we would be taking on with council's approval for that. And so on the loans, there is one I want to point out and it, it's titled the sewer system interim financing. And we did, last year, we brought forth the council when we did the sewer project. When we are doing this project, we have some loans and some, some grants and through the USDA RD, which we have to fund first. And then they will pay us, basically pay off the loan that we receive. So we do need to go out for interim financing for that, which is very typical. It happens all the time with the USDA RD loans. So we would go through, we're, we're going to go through Casvier Valley Bank. We brought that to council last year and we'll get an interim financing loan to pay for that project. And then when the project's done, the USDA will basically cut a check to pay off that entire loan when the project is done. However, we are responsible for the interest that we will be carrying on that loan. So that's, that is what that loan is. So that, that is the, the, the end of this presentation. Yes, Mayor Claire Jimenez?
I was wondering, since we have so many loans for the sewer system, where it's almost like thirteen million dollars of loans, how, what is the interest rate on each one of those and how much time are we taking to pay them finally off?
They, they are fairly low interest loans through the USDA or the state revolving fund, which is where we have our two loans, loans from. So city manager.
I believe the USDA, can you hear me? The USDA is one point two three percent. And right off the top of my head, I don't know what the ecology, what is. It might be two point two three, I think. I can't remember. I'll, I'll have to get the correct number.
Okay. And the USDA is forty years.
Forty years, USDA forty years. That's a long time, but I remember why we did that. How much would, do you think that interim financing, because we have to pay the loan, how much?
I am, I'm budgeting for fifty thousand dollars.
For the year?
For the year. Because it is, it's twelve million dollars.
Yeah.
So there's three phases of this sewer project. The first one is ecology, clean water money. The next two are the USDA RD money. So that's why we have to get the, the interim loan this year. So we have money to go through the project. Then at the project's done, we can submit for reimbursement. So it's what, eighteen months of us holding it, plus or minus?
About that.
So then Debbie, are they all going to be the four, forty years to pay off?
No, no, the, the state revolving fund is twenty years.
Twenty years.
And of that twelve million dollars, we got eight point six or something like that million dollar grant. And the loan is only like four million of it.
See, and I didn't understand that part. I thought that what we got was twenty million and of the.
Two projects, that's two funding agencies together. We got approximately six point three million dollars from ecology, that's state money.
Was that?
And I think it's like fifty-five, forty-five, forty-five percent grant. So there's about a three million dollar loan for that one and a three million dollar grant for that one. And the other is a twelve is the remaining, which is like fourteen million dollars. We came up with one point four million of our own money for match, because that's what we had to have. Then whatever one point four million is from fourteen million, then basically about three million of that is, is loan and the other is grant.
But we have a total of, it's an eight, eight million dollar loan and ten million dollars in grants. And then our city share of one point four. So it's like, you know, eight million loan, city's going to pay one point four, so nine point four. And then the grants is ten million.
Almost straight down, ten tenths, it's almost fifty fifty.
Yeah, it's almost fifty fifty.
And by the time we make our first payment on this project, there'll be, three of our other old loans will, will drop off.
And in, when we go through some of the, we have four budget workshops to go through. I will be bringing the debt schedule to council so that they can see. We did have, because in 2020, we did have a loan that came off for two police cars that we had purchased. So we have two loans that come off this year.
But aren't we buying two police cars?
We, those are cat, those are cat, we're actually, we're buying three this year. And we are budgeting for one next year. So we were, we were, we were the, for the replacement plan, we had budgeted to replace one car in 2020. But when we went through our meetings with our, with FCS group and talked about the whole police services plan, council had approved moving two of 2021's vehicles into, two of the three cars from 2021 into 2020. So we received one car already. We have two cars that are supposed to be coming, I think in the next couple of weeks is what Chief Barwell had told me. And then we are budgeting for that, the third one in 2021.
So the reason I bring that up is, yes, two of them came off, but aren't we getting two more on? So in a way, there's nothing coming off because we're adding two more for the two that left.
Well, we're, we're actually paying, we're actually just paying outright for them. We're not.
For no loan though.
For no loan, right.
Yeah, we, we had the money fund, we had the money.
Right. We had, that's correct. We had, we've had a significant amount of salary savings, which, you know, is not money that we ever want to budget for the future. But we did have the resources available. And so they were already budgeted out of the police department. So we used that money to pay for the police vehicles.
And I think we need to all remember this other financing page, the majority of the dollars are unfunded mandates. So it's not like, I don't want the citizens to think we're just sitting back here spending money like we really don't care. It was money that had to been spent.
Right. I did, I mean, that is correct, particularly with our street fund. You know, we, the, you know, the court ruled in favor of no more transportation benefit district monies, vehicle license tabs. So that's a huge hit to us. That was some of our revenue that supported our street system and helped to be matched for some of our capital projects. So we, we don't, we no longer have match for capital projects now. And we still need to provide safe streets. You know, when our fire department, our police department get in their cars and trucks, they need to be able to rely on the fact that they're going to get there because we have a straight, a, a safe street system. We need to be doing street cleaning, we need to do snow plowing, we need to have streetlights and electricity. We need crosswalks. There's an MUTCD manual that is how, throughout the entire nation, it tells how sidewalks and stop bars and stop signs are to be placed because wherever you go throughout the country, you expect a stop sign to be right there. No other place but the same place. You expect the crosswalks to be a certain way. So we are required to maintain our street system in the safest way for the population. So are there, are there any questions? Anything for clarification? Is there any particular item within the projected revenues that you'd like to talk about? Please, please feel free to ask for, and we can discuss.
I know, I want to thank you Debbie, because I know I called today and you called me back. And we were on the phone for what, half an hour, 45 minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
All of my questions and you know, a lot of them.
And, yes. And, and, and one of the things I do count on Councilmember Jimenez for is her red pen. And she does do a very good job of going through and finding things that may need a little improvement on. And so I, I do offer that to all of you. Please review the document. This, this is the document that you're, not this particular one, but this is a budget that you're going to prove, approve. This is, this is our, basically our work document for the, for the upcoming year. And, you know, if you have, if you have questions, if you want to call, if you want to stop in, please do so. I, I want you guys to be as informed as you can be when you're making those decisions. When we get into the expenditure side, we do have some, you know, there's going to be some difficult items that we have to talk about. And which is part of the reason why we wanted to spend some time going through the revenues. So, so council knows, you know, this is, this is what we have. This is where our money comes from and this is what we can spend it on. And, you know, the more informed you are with the information is you guys are just going to make the best decisions from that. So, so again, please just, you know, feel free to stop by, call. I'm more than happy to go over anything with you. I may talk way too much because I love talking about budget and so be prepared for that. But again, I, I welcome any question or any, any edit that you have also. So.
Great, thank you.
That's purple.
Really, thank you.
So with that, I will hand it over to city manager Hoyt. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie, excellent. Like I say, it's a great reference sheet. Every time you go through this, you go, yep, that's how you do it. It's very, it's kind of simple, but it's complex and it's very voluminous. And so if you have any questions as you go through this, please jot them down. Give Debbie or I a call so we can answer those questions for you, so.
Now Debbie's done a fabulous job. I remember those old spreadsheets, I don't know, like, I think Lauren, you remember those old ones that come off those old kind of printers?
Oh, yeah.
Forever, and you couldn't understand them all because you go here and then here. So I like the way that Deb's formatted it. It's very concise, I mean, easy to follow and easy to read. So she has done a fabulous job.
And, and in honor of, of past council member Thorington, we have page numbers on everything. You'll find out, those are important.
Makes it a lot easier to find.
And Debbie did tell us she was going to be getting a binder ready for us so we can keep everything in there like always. She was just waiting for the tabs. As soon as they come in, then we can get it all well organized. She's always good about that.
Yeah, Debbie and I will be meeting with all the department heads this week and first part of next week to go over all their budget line items and make sure we have everything down correctly and find any mistakes that we have. And then that, that'll, all of a sudden, we'll have that together, so. Kind of an evolution, so.
Great.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, so that's it for tonight, then?
Black, thank everybody for hard work that they did at city hall preparing us documents and everything. So a lot of reading involved. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mask up.
Wear that face diaper.
Good night, everyone.
Did you adjourn, Mark?
I said adjourn, but.
Oh, sorry, you didn't hear it. Thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.